I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Isili.
Here.
Councilman Powell is not with us, Councilman Martel.
Here.
All right, well, we're gonna, this is a nice update we're gonna have this morning on the traffic pilot program with our highway superintendent Charlie McCardle and our deputy superintendent Mark Brager. So why don't you come on up and join us, tell us what you, what you thought about the pilot program? And then we're going to also talk about discussions that have been had with the county, I think. You'll update us about that.
Yep.
And we've got some special guests with us today that I'm sure are gonna have some thoughts or you've had some communications with the village.
So, thank you for having us, do wanna thank our colleagues from next door, they've actually been a big help.
Deputy Mayor and Chief Hertau.
So just to recap, as you remember, we put together a pilot program which included police department, big giant help from Suffolk County, highway department, Southampton Village Police Department, where we closed down some lanes, blinked some lights, and put together this intensive afternoon program. As everybody remembers, we definitely had some hurdles in the beginning, we made some corrections, made some more corrections, and we went back to the second corrections, but by the second week, we had it down pretty good where, and I think most of you actually.
Through it.
Ride through it, if not on your everyday travel. We're proud to say that from North Sea Road to the Lobster Inn, it was done in seven to eight minutes, which is a miracle.
Yeah, I thought it worked really well, the fir-, maybe the second day, I don't know if that was the best day, but, or, you know, there was some rain too, but...
There was a water main break, both broke the first two days, so they were dealing with that, that really upset the whole.
Yeah, so maybe it was the third day that was the best, but then something changed and it wasn't as great, and then it changed.
You know, it was, you know how they do the roving cleaning of the highway where you get stuck in traffic and then... So anyway, we made corrections as we went, and we did this on purpose. You know, we get stuck behind these traffic studies that cost millions of dollars and take forever to get results. We had a live survey that people could go on their phones and answer, and we took that to heart right away. We had an early merge by Burger King, and a lot of people thought that it was backing up on North Sea Road, that we should move the merge a little further west. We tried it, it actually hurt us, so we went back to the Burger King.
Yeah, I thought that was better.
I don't mean to jump around, but we canceled, we had one lane west, east on 39 of North Sea Road, where cars typically, you'd have two lanes that would come up to the light. It was only an extra 20 cars, but apparently we got complaints saying that it backed up further east. You know, we got complaints from Sag Harbor, and I laughed because we got complaints before we even had, you know, boots on the ground and had our cones out, that, you know, LNG was complaining that the traffic in Sag Harbor was backed up because of our program on 39. But at the end of the day, once we got it figured out, and it was, you know, it was intense with staffing, and it was a big help, we had drones up, the village had drones up, the village had their, their police out there at certain areas to enforce some of the turns and so on. It really did work, you know, and I was disappointed, I was on Zoom when we, when we met with the county, that the county right away came out and said that their data said it didn't work. And honestly, we were very disappointed, Mark jumped in, the chief jumped in right away, you know, they weren't.
How did they say that, where, is it just a private meeting that you all had on Zoom?
Yeah, I, well, what happened was, I'll go back, so the staffing and the cost were expensive, and we heard a lot of noise from the north and south people. And I had an interesting conversation with Robert Ross, I don't know if you know, or you know Robert? So Robert's a long-term Southampton guy, he was, worked here for years, then he went to the hospital, but anyway, I see him at the deli, and we were talking about the program, and I was explaining that, I don't know how many cars a day went by, I think counted 6,000, between 6,000 and 8,000 cars went past us, and...
Just in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Wow.
And I was explaining to Robert that we got a handful of complaints about the north and south, and he brought up the term, you have to look at the better good, the good for the better good. And it makes a lot of sense, like, it was better for more people than it was not. And I think that's what we have to realize here. So, as we move forward, I, we came up with a, and again, the village saw great relief when we did the program on 39. Hill Street, if I'm not wrong, Hill Street was busy but moving. And when it's moving, you don't have people going down the side streets to try to take advantage of it.
So you think it alleviated the pressure on Hill Street?
It did, it did, and again, not right away, but as the...
It took a couple of days for people to realize that 39 was the way to go, and once they realized that they could get down there in seven minutes, they...
There's a lot of obstacles too, you put cones out and waves and GPS shows a construction thing, and it tells people not to go that way. But anyway, as they learned, and again, it's like herding cattle, by the second week, Hill Street saw some relief, we saw some great results, but it was staff-intensive. So we came up, me and Mark came up with an idea that we could do this in a modified version, meaning, we don't need the county to put out cones, we ask them to re-stripe the road, and you can do it with tape, so if it doesn't work, you can pull it up. And at the worst, if you did re-stripe it, you would grind up the striping and re-stripe back. So, we went to the county and we asked them, as a group, Michael was there, the village was there, Mark was there, and we asked them, we had a modified version, to re-stripe the road the way we wanted, to blink the light at Sandy Hollow, so it's always green when you're coming out of Sandy Hollow to go west. And at Sandy Hollow, that's where it became two lanes. So it's one lane from Burger King all the way to Sandy Hollow, everyone's like, reducing it to one lane, it's two lanes, more people move. We proved that not to be true.
Mm-huh.
Right? First of all, it would also give room for the police to pull people over, you know, and that's a big issue we have on 39 is the speeding, but the police have no room to take any action. So with the light blinking like the old days, if you're familiar, if you're around and you have some history here, Sandy Hollow was where it came out, you could, there was no light there. You just came out, and that's where the two lanes started. We asked the county to blink that light, and again, stripe it so it's only one lane, you don't need people there. The light at McGee Street would have to be timed better with Sandy Hollow, so that if McGee Street turns red, 39 at Sandy Hollow also turns red. Because that's a big block-the-box problem there. So once that light is timed with Sandy Hollow, and they go, we have a feeling that we're gonna be fine.
But I thought Sandy Hollow was gonna be blinking.
Sandy Hollow will be green from north, Sandy Hollow will come on to 39, but there will be a red light for people on 39 at Sandy Hollow, because you need that turning lane to go north.
Okay.
But it has to be timed with McGee Street. So, I don't care if there's nobody making a left turn, if McGee Street turns red, 39 has to turn red, otherwise it backs all the way up, and we don't get the relief we're looking for. We also asked the county to have a permit in place to blink the light at the college, if need be. I would say I had a, a distance of agreement with Ryan, the traffic consultant for the village, he wants to blink it, I wanna have the option to blink it, and if we have to, it's easy enough to go, and again, the manpower for that would be one police officer and a few highway people to set up cones, if we do blink it. If we see it moves and we get results, then all of this is done without any manpower, and really just re-striping the roads. So we had a meeting with, Michael was there with Suffolk County. Ed Romaine took the floor for 45 minutes. He wasn't prepared for the meeting, because he kept asking us to put a proposal together, and Len took a lot of time and wrote a detailed description of what we wanted to do. And there's really no cost except timing these lights and putting down some striping, minimal costs. And that's where we're at now, we're waiting to hear back, the county promised us we'd hear in a few days, and that has come and gone.
Wait, so they initially said, we don't like it, didn't work, and you disproved that by showing them what drone footage? Or you just kept speaking to them about it?
I think Michael, Mark, and the chief spoke and said, you know, they had data from GPS that they said that, and even Romaine came out and opened up with, you know, it was a great try, Charlie, but it didn't work.
What, did they use Google Maps?
Yeah, and they used GPS readings from, we don't know who, but all of us can prove it worked, you know?
I would just like to echo Village Chief Hertau, who, you know, talked a lot about her experience on the ground with the police force, sharing the experience with our town police, and just explaining how challenging it is dealing with the traffic issue here in the town, and that this pilot did provide relief for a lot of the drivers, and, you know, Charlie and Mark chimed in, and myself, and just said, we need to give this a try. This is something that we can do with the striping, and if we have to take it away, we can. And, but, we seem to gain the trust of the county, and they seem to be willing to give this a shot.
So what did they say they were gonna get back to us this week with what, their answer?
Yeah, pretty much. And it was disappointing, to be honest, they, they appeared to have no written on their face from the beginning. And there was a lot of people to meet, that had to be 20 people there, right? And, yeah.
I'm definitely happy to start our letter-writing campaign, because I got a lot of people that would write letters saying that they saw that it worked, I mean, people that worked in East Hampton were calling to say thank you because they got home.
It's actually been a pretty big topic of anywhere I go. People wanna know, when is it coming back, and why did we stop it? And I get it, it was expensive, you know, and it was a little bit, a little bit, I'm not gonna say dangerous, but risky. You know, the county had to set those cones up, and that, it was a critical time, and that was another learning curve. In the beginning, they struggled with it, and then they had it down to, you know, we were timing it, they had it down, and the lights, and then I was calling, like, blink the light, blink the light, we're ready, you know? We got hurt a little bit, if you remember, by Tuckahoe School, I went to the superintendent prior to this. He explained to me the last bus leaves at 3:30, so we decided to blink the lights at 4, so all the school kids would be done. He failed to mention there was an after-school program that parents couldn't get to because we had some of the turns restricted and so on. And again, this modified program does not prevent north and south travel. It's just hoping that it would enhance the east to west a little bit better than it is right now. And that's all we're hoping for, and I get, and the village, again, would attest to the fact that if people stay on 39, then they get relief.
Some north-south travel was prevented, isn't it?
No.
Not miss, it was when we did the pilot.
McGee and Tuckahoe was canceled, you had to go to North Sea Road.
But now...
That was the biggest complaint we got, so if that's alleviated with this, I don't see that...
And honestly, Ryan, you know, he's not here, but Ryan has a lot of knowledge, he's an engineer. He, he made a point that even if we blinked the college, you could still go to McGee Street, you know? But...
I just have two questions, Henry Road, because you were restricting Henry Road, right, that helped a lot too.
We branched out a little bit, and that's, that was one of the things the county kinda shrugged their nose at. There was some outskirts that also helped, that I don't know, we'd have to see if this, this modified version works without closing off Henry Road, or, we were at the north side of McGee Street, at Shrubland, at Sabonic, kinda requesting people not go down, you know? Same thing at those, one of those side streets off of North Sea Road that everybody cuts down.
North Thunbrook.
Yeah, and by the way, there's, and again, we have issues with enforcement, I'm not pointing fingers, but everybody can't be everywhere.
And like, the signs are set up for no trucks.
Commercial traffic is not supposed to turn off.
Such-and-such a time, so it's there.
During the afternoon, it's not something that...
Well, I think if, maybe if we didn't have the police having to do so much heavy work blinking the lights, they could throw enforcement there to kinda try to enforce that.
They, look, they, the whole thing really came together. The police department had a substation out at the, at the Elf's Club parked right centrally, they had the drones going, the village had the drones going, we got great footage of it, of it really working. And of course, people turn around and say, yeah, you, all the lights are green, nobody has to stop, of course it's gonna work. So this modified version, I think, does a little of everything, keeps the north and south, manpower is none, and it leaves us the opportunity, if we do have to blink the light, that it's easy enough to do.
And I do just wanna mention really briefly, we mentioned the people that were at the meeting with the county, and I just wanna mention, County Legislature Ann Walker was there to help also advocate for us to implement this.
Well noted, Michael, well noted.
Well, there were two roads that were closed, it was McGee and Tuckahoe Lane, and now those will be open.
Yep.
If the county is coming out to stripe, if they agree to do this, which we hope they do, has anybody, I've been asking for probably two years now to ask them to do a don't-block-the-box on the North Sea Road intersection.
That's on the plans, right?
It's on the plans.
Okay, because that's horrible.
So there were a few things that we were hoping, and look, the timing, we were hoping to get in there earlier, because they're redoing 39 now, so the timing to re-stripe it would have been perfect. We missed that, we missed that mark, because it's, I think it's state money that they're doing this with. And they're very restrictive on, all of that had to be done prior to the contract. Rosemar, who we deal with all the times, and, you know, we would wanna help you, but, you know, we're at this deadline. So that part, we kinda missed it, but, don't-block-the-box over by McDonald's is a must, but has to be enforced. We agreed that we would, both sides of us would do our, our part. They're missing a no-right turn on North Sea Road to get on 39, you're not supposed to make a right on red, the sign is way up at the light, there used to be one right at the triangle. Those people funnel out, they cause a problem, so that has to stop. McGee Street, and I have to say, this was all Mark, he got the county to do it, McGee Street is now widened. North, south part of McGee Street at 39 is now widened, would have dedicated left-turning lane, a center lane, and a right-turning lane. And, so that, that hopefully is gonna also generate a turning arrow, so people can get out of the village. Look, if the light's red, let's pump them out, everybody stay where they are, we pump them out. They did a little bit of work on Shrubland, Shrubland was a direct T onto 39. They took off a little bit of the corner, so at least you can edge up and look over your shoulder instead of looking left, so that may help Shrubland empty out. But my goal is, if 39 works, Shrubland won't be busy, they will be bumper-to-bumper past Schinacock Golf Course anymore. But it's a learning curve, and that's where we're at, so, I don't think it was a big ask from the county. I honestly think they just have no, no reason that they wanna help us on the east end, I honestly think that. They just, they don't think we're smart enough, they don't think we deserve anything, and I'm hoping that changes.
Well, I think they wanna help, but they don't think that these, I think they have such a big picture in mind that they don't want, they don't think these little changes are gonna do anything significant, but for us, anything is helpful.
They, they are big on the studies, and anybody that went to the college to listen to their results of the study, I was there, if I had something I would have thrown at, they just put their hands up. And just said, there's nothing we can do, there's too many people.
Yeah, we did talk to them too about traffic circles, and they said, oh, that's a Band-Aid, that's not gonna do anything. So they're not interested in little, they haven't been interested in making little changes that, but these can make a big difference.
I will say that their attitude toward traffic circles has changed, I've spoken to Charlie Bartha about that. They're, they are changing their approach, and I think that the, the goals will be to try to find some sort of ways to help us in the interim, but what they're saying is, is that, you know, we need to find some sort of comprehensive holistic way of moving the traffic on 39 at some point down the road. This will help certainly westbound traffic in the afternoon, this particular program, but we are gonna have to figure out a long-term solution at some point.
And let's not forget, we have the US Open coming next year, I mean, this is, we, just last time it came, we just didn't work that week, because it was like we did bare minimums, because it wasn't...
That conversation came up a while ago, and very disappointing when I hear them say, oh, you know, you did say you didn't come to work, but they made the point that it was apples and oranges when we said it worked, when we did the blinking lights and the cones for the open. And their, their attitude was, oh, so many people were on vacation that they weren't here. 90,000 extra people came, 90,000, and it worked, you know? Everybody who was on vacation rented their house, so every house was filled, everybody was driving to the stores, they would go and shop, and it worked. And they, you know, it's, it, look, it's expensive, it's staff, it's a lot of things. But this, this modified version, and again, I'm open to say it didn't work. If it doesn't work, pull your tape up, hit the switch, the light's back on, and we can say, as elected officials, we tried to do something.
And that's huge, because I get that all the time from people, my husband included, like, just try stuff. Like, why, why is everybody just throwing up their hands, saying there's nothing we can do outside of, you know, another road, or this or that, I mean, it's so defeating to people that have to sit in this day out and day out to hear there's nothing we can do, and we're not even gonna try. At least if you try stuff, I mean, people are really appreciative of the fact that you try, I mean, as many people as complained, there were 10 times as many people that said, thank you for trying something.
Nobody, nobody would argue that the cones at Canoe Place doesn't work. Nobody has that argument, the only argument you have is the people that live across, behind CPI have to go all the way into the village to turn around to go east.
Well, that, you might be, your successes have brought people over the Palm Club Bridge too.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, every action is a reaction, but, so Charlie, I did go into the pilot program five times, okay? First time, I was, thought it was a little rough, I was going from Bridgehampton back, it was one of the first two days. Took me a little bit longer, I think, to get to North Sea Road, but after that, it just flew. As the days went on, and the times I changed a little bit later, a little bit earlier, I thought the commute from, even from Bridgehampton through Watermill to North Sea Road worked better. But I agree with Cindy that the block-in-the-box and that North Sea Road intersection, sometimes you sat there for a couple of lights before you actually got to the, you know, to the great rush. And it was very, it was very hard to stay under the speed limit once you got past there.
Especially with Charlie sitting there going, go, go, go!
So that's the other thing, I did see Charlie and Mark on-site every single day, so thank you guys for trying that out, but yeah, I thought it worked, I thought it worked very well. I think the complaints we got, I think you've rectified the situation from north to south, so, I mean, I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, I got one text from my husband, McCardle's gonna get hit, he needs to get out of the road!
Yeah, you were smiling, because we were all smiling as we went by.
Yeah, it was, it was a few colorful exchanges with people, but it is what it is.
It, you know, and people are bad drivers too, you know, you're better off getting to speed to merge than you are to go car-for-car, you know, and that, that's why we moved the merge past Burger King, because we thought if people got up to speed, they could be able to merge it. And that's why at Canoe Place, the merge is much further down, so people are getting up to 20 miles an hour, where now you have space to get in, and that, that really works. But I hope the county supports this, and again, the part of putting it back is so simple. And I think it resolves the north and south issues too.
Chief, Deputy Mayor, did you wanna say anything about all this? Come on up, please.
I just wanna say, thank you to Charlie and Mark and all of you for supporting this. I do wanna, just something to throw at all of you with the traffic issue, I mean, most of us sit in it on the way home. I live west of here, all my, all my cops live west of here, our teachers, hospital staff, our nurses, our doctors. We're not gonna get the quality personnel out here to work and to take care of us and take care of the community if traffic is, I can't take the job, I'm not sitting in that. So it's really, really important, I think, to implement this program. It, it helped us a great deal, Hill Street was still heavy, but it moved, and as long as it moved, like Charlie said, people would, wouldn't go down First Neck to Ox Pasture and use that as a raceway to speed, and come out Lee Avenue, and then Lee Avenue's backed up all the way to Ox Pasture. So it really did help, people don't mind staying on Hill Street if they're moving. So, you know, we support it fully, you know, we'll help Chief Kiernan in any way we can with staffing. If we do have to end up manning the light, if it's one person, you know, we could alternate to help defer costs. That's how important it is for us and our residents, so, I just wanna thank Charlie and Mark and Supervisor Michael, and everybody here on the board for backing Charlie with this program.
Well, thank you. What happened on Hill Street with the no access during certain hours from the side street?
The pilot program that we did?
Yeah, because I thought, you know, that's what would keep the traffic moving. Now you have to thread every car, somebody has to come in, you gotta wait, and that's bumper-to-bumper.
We have the no-right-turn restrictions on the north side, and the pilot program that just ended on Hill Street, when they put up the temporary traffic light, which was a complete disaster, they took it down after a week. But they wanted to try the no-left turns from the south side.
Yeah.
Because what was happening is, people exiting Lee Avenue or Captain's Neck were making that left turn, and it was stopping traffic from moving, so, that data from that pilot is still being analyzed and collected now, even though the pilot's over, and then they're gonna make a presentation to the board to see what their recommendation would be. But we may, you know, whatever their recommendation is, we may hold off, if we can get this up and running, we may not have to do anything, so, I think we're looking and waiting to see what happens.
Okay.
You, you can't be afraid to try something, and you can't be afraid to say you were wrong.
Yeah, no, you have to be willing to...
Yep, the village gave it a shot.
Maybe you fail, maybe you succeed, but at least you tried.
So is there a chance that the traffic come out of North Sea Road that is going westbound, that you can reduce that to one lane instead of the two?
The turning lanes, you mean?
Yeah.
Didn't we try that at the end?
No, we talked about it, but we didn't see, coming out of the village, we didn't see the need to drop it to one lane. When it was working, it didn't back up like under the trestle like we've seen in the past, so, we didn't see the need to make it one lane. We thought about it, because you merge quickly at Burger King, but it wasn't that, we didn't realize, it wasn't that many cars backed up where they couldn't merge in time.
And I think we also, you also had me put two officers at that intersection, so they didn't block the box.
So that's the most important thing, yep.
A real-time view of, you know, if we can have the block-the-box diagram in the middle of the pavement, it would help, and then have enforcement there from both sides.
Have the enforcement, because people are gonna ignore it.
We had a highway guy at the, so we couldn't make the right on red.
Right.
So now, it was open. So when the light turned green from 39 to go west, it was a little bit of a race to get to the merge, but that's fine. And then I have video, they're going past me like, you know, it was, it was nice, you know?
They rolled away with one finger.
If I may, if I may, this was a very, very simple and practical solution to crazy political problems. I mean, what you pointed out, Councilmember McNamara, is true, it's a dilemma. You do nothing, or you try, failed, we knew it was gonna fail, but we had to do something, because doing nothing was not the right choice. The county executive was very interested in us petitioning the state and the federal government for a long-term solution, and I think Charlie's right, they weren't prepared, he wasn't prepared for the meeting. That's what he came in and talked about for 45 minutes, which, you know, we're gonna try to work on that with, with the governor and the State Department of Transportation. But he, you know, he's got some ill-conceived ideas, like taking the easement along the L-I-R-R and making a highway there. We have two trestles in the village, I mean, it's not gonna work, it's just not practical. So I think, in our lifetimes, this is the practical solution to an immediate problem. And the third level, so that's the state, what he would like, he'd like, I think, to lose County Road 39 to the state, so that the 27s are connected by the state. But the third level is our residents are suffering terribly, and it's a real public safety issue with respect to how crazy it is for these people who can't get in and out of their driveways because of the dense... because of the dense traffic north and south of Hill Street. So, uh, you know, we were very happy to be part of this, and hopefully we'll, as I said the other night at our board meeting, I'm cautiously optimistic.
That's good. We'll keep trying. Do you think they're, um, not responding, 'cause there might be a concern about the tape and the quality and how long it would last, and what if it pulls off, and then it's gonna create accidents?
I don't think they're at that level yet. And again, at the end of the day, we do it all the time. They could, they could actually paint it, and they grind it up. It's not, doesn't come out as pretty as you would like it, but they could easily grind it up and put it back to the way it was. I don't think they're at the level of talking about the actual mechanics of it. I don't think they're just ready to give us the nod.
We've started a letter-writing campaign, uh, so a lot of our residents are sending, uh, emails to Bartha. Wanted to lay off Romaine until we have it. Let go after Romaine. So Bartha's getting all our emails. And we probably have several hundred that have gone out.
Like, to your point though, when you said that he, you know, is, was pushing for this much bigger plan, to that end, I mean, that's all he's heard about, was, I mean, they've done, they spent all this money on a study that said that that's the only thing that will work. So, as a, as an elected official, do you wanna be on record saying that's the only thing that will work, nothing else will work, and then here comes this simple solution, and then have it work, and then you?
We need to get past that.
We need to get past it, we need to do what we need to do.
The eastbound problem, you know?
But you know what, at least, at least you can get home in the afternoon.
I'm sorry, I thought that was brought up too, you know, one step at a time.
Exactly. Yeah, it's not like this is gonna solve everything.
And just, and just that being able to go, like, yeah, you sit in the morning and you get to work, and then at least you know though, you're not looking at the clock, when do I have to leave, so I don't have to sit in it again? I mean, at least if you can drive home at the end of the day and end your day on a positive note, it's, it's just, it's a lot of mental stuff for people too, just, it's.
It's so discouraging to leave and then know you have to sit for over an hour.
If I could say it's a quality of life issue. As you were speaking about employees, that's all we hear about, is that, and, um, my son worked in East Hampton for, for a small stint, and then came in this direction. But it, it just, it was two and a half hours to get to East Hampton early in the morning, and, you know, I'm in traffic from west as well. It, it's a quality of life. It's disparaging when you get to Hill Street, and you're like, you're stopped. You're like, okay, I'm gonna be two hours to get home now. You know, it's just, and that's both ways. You know, this morning, no traffic, 'cause it's raining, and no landscapers and such. But I, I'm sorry, I just needed to interject, because I deal with this with our employees. We lose people all the time. And it's very difficult to keep them.
The level of misunderstanding was great. I mean, he actually said, Romaine, that we, I hope we're not being recorded, by the way.
This is a, this is a lie.
But I wanted to hear it.
He actually said he didn't think this would work in the summer. I almost fell off my chair.
Yeah. Look, they also brought up, we, everybody in this room knows, holiday weekend does not count. We wouldn't even try something on a holiday weekend, it's not gonna, and that, he brought that up, like, oh, Fourth of July, this would never work. No, no kidding. We wouldn't even try it. This is Monday through Friday to address the trade parade and to get it, give relief, and again, I, I would be disappointed if they don't go for it, because it seems pretty simple. And the cost is super low.
Well, the striping would be permanent, for the time being.
Right.
Yeah. But you're saying, what wouldn't be weekends, the blinking, or just, are they gonna?
Be there. We're running, so, I, first of all, we, if it works, none of us are even gonna have to be there.
Yeah.
Right? It's just the rules of the road. Um, we will be there to make sure it works, but on a weekend, you know, it, it just runs its course. Everybody drives and are based by the rules of the road, and we don't have to be there.
I think it's more important to try something like that, because without the cones and without, you know, and with something that people can, it's not just a one-week thing or a two-week thing, it's something that people can adapt to, and we can see how it really works long-term.
We will be absolute.
Yeah.
And if we, if we start it before next season, it'll already be in some people's heads that this is muscle memory, and now that it'll just, everyone will catch on.
Yep.
That's our hope, anyway.
Well, hopefully after that last meeting, um, that they know that we're serious about it, and they might've just thought it was folly, but now they know they've heard from all of you, and, and hopefully they're taking it seriously, and I'm certainly happy to call the Commissioner. If we don't hear back this week.
We don't hear back this week.
Call on Monday.
All of us are gonna have to make a call, because we were under the impression we were gonna hear last week. You know, so now, like you said, in a few days. The meeting was on a Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. A few days to me would've been that week. What do you think, Mark?
You have to do this. No more excuses. Let's, let's try it and do it. That's it.
He did make a comment that all of us, I think there was a bunch of texts going on. Ed Romaine made a comment that all the traffic lights, 'cause he was the Brookhaven Supervisor, and he learned that the traffic lights, even on county and state roads, are the responsibility of the local municipality. And all of us started thinking, wait a second. If that's true, then.
That would make things a lot easier.
Just give me the key, we'll hit the switch. So I don't know if he was a hundred percent right, because we did need permits to blink the lights, but if.
Maybe he means we pay for the maintenance.
Yeah.
With the light, the traffic lights.
We own those lights, you guys own those lights, and all of us, the texts started flying. All right, get up, we're out.
I, I, I did say at the meeting, and I'll say it here, so we're all on the same page, but I do think that we're forgotten about on the east end. We are. And, you know, this is a small ask, uh, we can do it, and we're just waiting for them to give us the okay.
Well, I've heard him, I've heard the County Executive say several times, his gaze is always to the east. So let's take him up on that and follow up and persuade him to help.
He is from Moritzus, so it's not too far off.
Yeah.
And I will say that he's always open to meeting with us, um, as previously, we've always had challenges, I think, as a municipality, to really try to find those resources, and for the most part, the, the county has been open, and I do wanna recognize, uh, County Executive Romaine for being open with everybody. Um, uh, and, and being open to these ideas. I think, I think really honestly, uh, we're probably going to be able to implement this. I wanna have hope that we will get to where we need to be, so.
Any other questions?
I don't. Do you have anything else you wanna say?
Let us know when to write the letters and make the calls.
Yeah. We'll be going with those calls. Thanks so much for coming in, all of you. It's great to see you again. All right, that brings us to our Supervisor and Town Council Member Liaison updates. I think we started on this one before, so Cindy, if you're ready.
Um, I am not.
All right. Michael, what do you have for an update?
So, uh, last evening, I joined Ola with Minerva Perez for a screening at the Southampton Playhouse of a movie called La Ola, which stands for The Wave, which was about, um, women in Chile, young women in Chile, who were part of a university, who spoke truth to power. It was an inspirational movie to show how music and, um, movements for freedom can kind of coexist and help drive change. Um, it was great to see, uh, the Playhouse, uh, helping to work with Ola to demonstrate how the arts and our Latino community are contributing po- positively.
It was here in Southampton?
Yeah, the Southampton Playhouse, it was a beautiful theater. They're very, um, they're very excited to, uh, begin a, a bunch of great programs and work with the town as well, so look forward to working with them on a number of different things. Um, also, uh, this past weekend, I met the, um, Ecumedical Patriarch, uh, Patriarch Bartholomew of the Greek Orthodox Church. Uh, his, uh, All Holiness, as he is referred to, was gracious and um, spent time with the church community, spent time with a lot of, uh, community folks. Mayor Manger was there as well um, to, uh, to meet him and to hear from him, and it was great to, um, you know, he is actually the equivalent of, essentially the equivalent of the Pope. It's not really the greatest, uh, comparison, but, uh, the Greek Orthodox Church is, is different from the Catholic Church, but, uh, uh, it was a really big moment for, uh, the Greek community here in Southampton. It was really an honor to be a part of that, and I wanna thank, uh, Father Alex Karluzos for having, inviting me. Um, I know he invited you as well.
We had a family wedding I couldn't attend.
Yes, um, but, uh, it was a really magnificent moment, so.
Oh, good. I'm so glad you were able to be there.
Oh, yes.
Well, let's see, I, um, we are embarking on the negotiations with the union. We got their proposals and, um, exchanged ours, and I'm gonna be talking to the board in executive session next week. Vince is gonna come with me too, and we're gonna just share the proposals and get feedback from everyone. And I had my meeting with Moody's yesterday on the bond rating, and it went very well, which is a relief. Don't wanna lose that triple A. We should get something in writing. I don't wanna, you know, you know, say in advance, but I think it's, it went very well, so as soon as I get the official letter, I'll let everyone know.
So I reached out to Councilman Pell. Uh, his one update is that, uh, going out the contract very soon in the West Hampton Senior and Youth Center.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna get an update on, uh, that too today.
So for myself, I did go to the Anti-Bias Task Force picnic on Saturday. It, it was decently attended, not wonderfully attended. Um, you know, they.
I have to say, I didn't know that it was happening, unfortunately.
Late advertising on it, but, uh, they did have the usual. They had Suffolk Community College there with a booth, Southampton Stony Brook Hospital, uh, our youth bureau was there. They did have entertainment, picture-taking, they had a, I, I don't know who made the food, I think they brought it from individuals, but it was wonderfully done. So it was a nice little day if you had a chance to go there, but I wish there was a way that, you know, we could publicize it more, maybe get a few more people to go there. Um, last night I had an EMS Advisory Board meeting. Um, you know, we talk every time about the radios and switching channels, but there still is some difficulty with radios and communication when there's outages. So they're working very hard. Even though they got the new eight-hundred radios, it doesn't always translate into what they need if a tower goes out or, you know, power goes out, so they're working very hard on that. I also had an ADU, uh, Advisory Meeting, Grant Advisory Meeting, and I just wanna bring up one thing, that, you know, the ADUs, people talk about where they are and all that, and it was nineteen projects that we're looking at. And, uh, there's five in Hampton Bays and four in Watermill. It seems like very equitable around the town, you know, where everything is. So it's across the board, and it's, it was a good meeting to bring everything up to date.
What's that meeting, who?
So ADU check-in?
Yeah.
ADU check-in?
Yeah, it's with our, it's with the Housing Department and CDLI.
Oh.
And, uh, last but not least, we had the community outreach for the proposed new skate park yesterday at Red Creek Park, who's very, very well-attended. Um, we showed, we actually had narrowed it down to two, two projects to take a look at. Um, we, we all agreed to one with some modifications. So they're going to revise the plan. It'll be on, um, our website. If not later today, by Monday. There'll also be a survey on what you like to see and your thoughts on the park. So if you're into skateboarding, your kids are young or old, I think there was a lot of people there that were over twenty-five, you know, as well as a lot of kids. So if, uh, you know, have any interest in the skate park, you know, please check our website by Monday.
That's good, yeah, let's get it done, because we have the money and the budget this year, so we can start construction.
You know, that's a big deal, I have to tell you. When they did the one in Montauk, it was actually more expensive than ours. Um, but it was mostly because of site work. They had a lot of boulders, they had to take out a lot of things, they had to take down. They were adding a basketball court to a skate park, so it ended up running to be more money. But the first thing they asked me after the meeting was, well, how much of this are you paying for? 'Cause they raised about a million dollars privately in Montauk. And, uh, when I told them that we have a budget, if we stick to it, it's all covered, they were so excited.
Oh, great.
The only hesitation I have is that the architect did say that we were expecting to be able to open this by summer of twenty-twenty-six. And I don't wanna bust a bubble, but I have my fingers crossed, I hope we can get that done. But it was nice.
Who is the architect on it? He's like a skate park guy, like.
So the two skate park guys that were proposing it, yeah, they've done them all over the country. They've worked for the major, you know, skater companies, vans, and so on and so forth, but.
The guy that worked on Montauk, was he there?
He came to the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, he's a great resource.
Yeah, he was the one that asked about the budget and how it was all gonna work out, and his eyes lit up, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, though, the, the survey will end, you know, and it won't stay open for too long. I mean, we wanna get the plans designed and.
That's a tight community, so once the guys, once everybody that was there gets the word out to take the survey, it'll probably end pretty quickly. But, uh, you know, skateboarding has changed so much. We've seen it on TV. It used to be the vert ramp and the wooden structure that we had in the past. Now it's a more cityscape, it's more as if you went to Manhattan and started skating around on curbs and benches and stuff like that. So all those apparatuses are in there, and then, uh, plus the bowl, which is supposed to mimic a pool in the old days, you know, when it first started. So it's a great design. It really came out well. So everybody check it out.
Good. Thank you. Great update. Cindy, what do you got for us?
Um, just some really great community events. Um, last week, I attended a VFW benefit concert with, uh, Legislator Welker, actually, at the American Legion. It was a great concert. Uh, Saturday was the East Quogue Seafood Festival to support the East Quogue Fire Department. It was very well-attended. They sell out every year. It's just a great community event. It was great to see everybody out for that. Um, and I wanna thank Darryl Ballmer, who had a pre-construction meeting with, uh, members of the dock committee and the contractor for the Schinikok Dock for the fendering system, which is gonna begin shortly, and Kristen and Darryl have worked out, they're gonna have a, um, a cleanup down there prior to the dockwork getting started, so that, you know, all the old stuff can get removed, and they can have some room down there, and um, and I wanna thank the committee, because they've been really great and helpful with getting the actual boat owners down there, you know, keeping them in the loop, making sure that the place stays neat and tidy to, you know, a better extent than it used to. Um, but that was a good meeting, and that's, that construction is gonna start shortly, and I think the cleanup days are the first week of October, and then the construction, they'll start bringing in the equipment and phasing it in, and then that should be getting underway, so.
Good. That's, uh, it'll be a very welcome change. All right, well, if there's no other comments, then I move to go into executive session for contracts and confidential legal advice and then close. On favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.